It is 10 o'clock. Commissioners, you ready? Okay, I will call the meeting to order. Are we recording? The chair notes there is a quorum present. Let's do the flag salute. I.
Hi.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, 2.0 is additions and revisions to the agenda. Commissioners, I, Delaney, sent out a letter to you guys last night that I would like to add under the consent agenda under 5.5, and that is a letter of support for Condon Arts Council. They are pursuing with our help and earmark for, to restore the Liberty Theater. And in the draft, one thing that I would like to edit is the draft spells theater as ER, and it needs to be RE. So that would be as amended. Any other additions or revisions to the agenda?
Well, I'm here. So we have a brief discussion about the CDR or CDS request. So congratulations on the record, maybe just we can kind of make sure that we're not missing something.
Absolutely. I'll put that number there.
Where are we going to go with that under 7.4?
Yes. I also want to note that the, under the executive session that's scheduled, that in addition to discussing real, real property transactions, I want to add as a second, which will be related to labor negotiations. Any other additions or revisions? Okay, we'll move on to 3.0, which is correspondence and public comment. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time and at other times throughout the meeting. Speakers are asked to raise your hand to be recognized by the chair, give your name and address. I'm limited comments, oops, three minutes. Let me just get this in there so I can see. For folks who are dialing in on your phone, it is star six to unmute yourself. If you are here on your computer, it is the lower left-hand side of your Zoom screen. And then, as always, I like to remember or remind folks that we are informal. So as we move through the agenda, if there are items that you want to provide input on, ask questions about, we welcome that. So at this point, is there any public comment? Go ahead, Joe. If you could, so the L can catch you and then just say your name and, and address for the record.
Joel Patnow, block 6568, I, Barnett Road, Mike Lowry. So we went down a couple of weeks ago by Blaylock Canyon at the off-ramp, and it's not very good with the garbage. And I know that's kind of an ODOT thing, all the, that we're, they kind of getting screwed on that. And we picked up three bags of garbage and a couch, just because I was on my way to. So then I had to go down there and do some, because it would be humiliating if you didn't. So I walked out in the back, made, just, we did something. It was by there yesterday, and it looked like we hadn't done. I mean, it was still atrocious, but part even where we picked up was bad. There was no couch, of course, but that was about it. And then Brooke, I talked to her, and she said at the Heffler Junction, it's not very good, and there's a garbage camp there. So I don't know what the answer is there, but maybe signs that say, you know, littering.
There's, there's fence lines, everything. It's an ODOT issue.
Yeah.
They just don't have the manpower or the, or the budget.
Could, could I respond too? I mean, I think, I, because I saw some of the stuff going around about it, I pulled into Phillipaby, Blaylock, and then, there were problems everywhere. But the problem is, you want to talk about Gillum County problem, it's on I-84, the edge of Gillum County. The other end is everywhere. It's more consolidated, obviously, where people stop, Phillipaby is a mess too. But I think maybe the best way, and you don't get on the real off, but the, the Lower John Day Act, maybe DOT's on there all the time and tell them we want it cleaned up.
Yeah, well, we actually, we, and put worms up to keep people from being able to drive way off the road, which helps, but still, it's.
It's a mess.
When you're headed down the freeway, they, they pull over to use the restroom and they unload their car.
Well, I'm, I'm going to bring that up at the next meeting.
Yeah.
But it's been, I mean, this started with COVID.
Yeah.
And it's just, we're in an embarrassing state right now.
Well, yeah. Well, people have no morals. They, they, there's no.
Under the freeway, every, we had the couch on, so we're on. And every hundred feet, there was garbage, they're darning, and you're just kind of going.
And I, and I hate to say this, the federal government has caused a lot of this, where they limit these truck drivers, you can only drive X amount of hours a day. You pull over, you stop, that's where you get the sun tea bottles.
And it's not.
There's hundreds of those.
It's not just the exits either, it's any place that's wide enough for gravel spotting, a lot.
Because if they get caught driving, you know, it's lively, but they pull over and stop, it's a mess.
There's also diapers though, and there's other, I mean, Starbucks and, so it's a wide range.
Yeah, it's a cold.
And Blaylock might be the worst. I don't know if it's the worst, but they, but they also launched some boats there.
Yeah.
And so there's stuff.
They go under the bridge, they leave stuff under the bridge, they go down around where the Indians on, in the, on down the road, and it's just, it's a mess everywhere. But it's a, it's an ODOT.
And they used to have a dump deal there at the viewpoint, I don't know if they still have that.
There is.
But their cars would pull in there and unload their, their sack and fill it.
And that's the way it will occur, yes. You know, they've got two, there's your two barrels of.
Yeah, I haven't stopped there for a second. Good.
Anyway, who dumps those, DOT?
Who?
Oh, they put them out.
That's kind of creepy. I mean, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. Additional public comment on this or another topic? Courtroom, anybody online?
Yeah, yeah, this is Joe Clotten. Can I be recognized?
Absolutely. Go ahead and just state your name and address for the record, so we can catch it.
Yeah, this, this is Joe Clotten, live at 850 West Third in Arlington. My, I just have a comment about the negotiations that was done with Avenged and the new solar project pertaining to the pilot program and whatnot. They, I know there's a lot of negotiation that went on, on how much per megawatt was going to be, that they would be paying through, and I believe it's through the SIP and through everything else. But my, but my question is, is if, if there's all the negotiations going on with the, the amount of money that, that they would be paying, how come there was never any, I guess, correspondence with the special districts of the affected area?
I guess that I would respond, it's on, nobody pays enough attention to what's going on with the county court. It's publicized, we have county court meetings, what the agenda is, goes out a week ahead of every meeting. And the, the special districts on the north end of the county are the ones that benefit the most from, from any of that stuff that happens on that end of the county. And we'd be happy to have a discussion. I am going to go to the North Health District Board meeting. They want me to, you know, talk to them about it and explain how the payment lieu of taxes worked, so.
Yeah, that, 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 that's, that's after the fact. Like, I myself, I, I worked during this time. But I remember previously when there was negotiations, anything done with the previous court, that there was talks and all that done well before the negotiations were, happened or, or were finalized. But there was zero on this go around, and that's, I just want to make clear that there's really not much. I guess.
Yeah, Joe, I would say that since I've been on the court, there's been two tax abatement programs that we've gone through with Avenged, the other one much larger than this, which was the Montag II. And we did, we did a red zone abatement on that, and, you know, there was, I think, in that, there was a reach out to the, all of the taxing districts, and we got zero response from any, if I remember correctly, maybe the court. But, yeah.
I was going to say, and this particular one, I think, is unique because it, it really isn't a significant negotiation in that the law sets the guardrails. So the most that they could pay was 7,000 per megawatt, and the least was 5,500. And when you're talking about a project that is 41 megawatts, that's literally $60,000 difference between the two. And if you break that out amongst the tax, taxing districts themselves, we're talking about maybe a couple of thousand dollars at most difference between the high and the low. So I think we felt like when, when it's SIP and it's a multimillion dollar difference in the negotiations, absolutely, we want everybody who's going to be impacted by that. But I, I think perhaps we felt, and maybe this was an error, that because the amounts of dollars per year that we were talking about were so insignificant in terms of the overall operating cost for all of the north end taxing districts, that it didn't necessarily warrant a separate meeting to talk about whether you were willing to give up, say, $2,000 a year.
But, but to not have that, to not have that, I think, I think going forward, I mean, we can't change what's already been done, but I mean, going forward, I, I do believe that, I do believe that this communication with, with the taxing districts reached out by the court. And whether it be joint board meetings, which we used to have in the past from the court, and, and, you know, reaching out, reaching out that direction, that, that's all I'm asking. I'm not saying what was done was right or wrong or anything. I, I understand what happened, I just, you know, I just, I just would like a little bit more communication and.
Well, I'm not wrong, are they? They still get part of the 5,500.
They get.
That, that is still going to be distributed.
The North End will get all of that through the taxing.
So the 5,500 that we negotiated, we're still going to get a piece of that.
I understand, Joe, the need to communicate, that shouldn't be a problem.
And regarding your request about joint meeting of the boards, we actually are already doing that. So this afternoon, we'll be holding a joint meeting. The court and the court hold joint meetings quarterly where we invite all of the taxing districts. So the next time that we, the one for this quarter is in Condon, but in about three months, we'll be back in Arlington. And so we'll just ask staff to make a note that you're included on that distribution list. And if you're able to attend, obviously, we want you to, to do so.
Perfect.
Okay, anybody else for a public comment at this point? Anybody online? Give folks a second to unmute. Again, I saw some folks come in on their phones, it's star six to unmute yourself if you would like to have public comments. If not, I think let's go ahead and move into 4.0, which is a hearing to receive public comment on ordinance number 2023-01. It's the fiscal year 2023-2024 Gillum County Weed Control Special Assessment. This is the time duly set and advertised for a public hearing in the matter of ordinance number 2023-01, an ordinance authorizing a special weed assessment within Gillum County for fiscal year 2023-2024. The rate for fiscal year 2023-2024 has been proposed at seven cents per acre. Hearings are conducted in accordance with ORS 569.175 through 569.620. This hearing is for the purpose of gathering evidence as to the need for identifying who will benefit from and taking input on the special weed assessment. This is a legislative hearing. All those in attendance that wish to testify are asked to sign the attendance sheet. If you are here in the courtroom with us, all of those who are participating via Zoom or phone that wish to testify are asked to seek recognition from the chair, then state your full name and address for the record. The hearing is now open, and we will go ahead and start with a staff report, which is usually, Doug, you just telling us what's new, what do we need to know that's on, coming up in the fiscal year for the weed department? You could maybe even talk about the staffing changes that recently happened and that you're the new weed officer.
Yeah, we took that position and we, our Mike Derby, which he's got his, two, well, he's got his plot and safety, and he just got it right away. So he's been doing the roads on the north end of the county, and I think he's doing really well. Asked lots of questions, and he retained a lot, and he's thinking, so it's, it's a lot for somebody that's never been around chemicals, and he's doing really well. As far as the new stuff coming up, they, they found Flowering Rush down on the Clovey River, and there are some in Gillum County and some in Morte County. There's a meeting, March 15th, on how they're going to address it. It's going to take boats, and crew, and the drivers to clean it up. It's going to be a mess. It's going to be expensive. But it's, you, you've got to do something, or it just gets away from you.
What's it called then?
Flowering Rush. Thing goes the bottom of the ground all the way to the top, so, you know, you've got to cut it off with the roots and pull it up and put it in bags and.
And when you say they, is that BLM? Is that a consortium of BLM in private?
OD is going to be, participate in it, but it's going to be the Army Corps is going to be the main driver of it.
Did they have discussions about that symposium, which posing in December? Did you hear anything? I didn't.
No, I didn't hear anything about that. Yeah. They, they didn't, they had a meeting in Morte County, probably two months ago, or maybe a month ago, but I, I didn't get an invite, but.
Yeah, I didn't remember hearing anything.
No, there was nothing about it until I heard about it later on. And then I called the OD, a guy from OD that does the eastern part of the state, and he said that he'd keep me in contact, and he has. He's sent me emails and stuff, but that's going to be, there are people from Portland State University, people from Washington State University, a lot of people are going to be involved in it. They think it's going to cost about $50,000 a day to work.
That's something that's coming out of the river?
Yeah.
So it's going to be both sides of the river, probably.
You know, I don't know about the Washington side, but I know it's on the Reagan side. I know we have it in Gillum County. I, I've never been down to look at it, but it doesn't come out close, probably. I mean, people don't. Yeah, and it's like, you know, I, I don't know what it's like up above, because typical river, everything flows down, so it could be way up above and. I, I'll find out a lot more about it the, the March 15th meeting, because it's going to be right after the weed assessment in Arlington, they got from there and go up there. And it lasts from 1:00 to 3:00, I believe. So I will be a lot smarter than that. But other than that, it's, that's about where we're at.
Good enough. Any questions, Kirk?
So that's not something the county would have to fund to clean up, or would they? Do you know what?
I, I, you know, it's, I think it's going to be the Army Corps is the one that's going to, and the people that are helpful probably get some payout, but what I'm guessing, because it sounds like they already know how much it's going to cost. It's just going to take probably two big crews, and two guys in the water. And you're going to have to have two guys just pulling it up and, and putting it in sacks, and you're going to have, you know, to dispose of it somewhere. It's going to be a major undertaking.
It's kind of creepy. It's got a little flower on it. It's got a little flower on it, don't it?
So things could get tangled up in it.
Yeah.
It's an nasty one.
That's what my mom said when she planted wildflowers in the, yeah, flowers in the backyard.
Well, that's one thing I learned in Louisiana, there's a lot of not, Louisiana.
Yeah, exactly. Any other questions for Doug? Okay, if not, we'll go into accepting public testimony. And again, for folks who are on the Zoom, if you had dialed into your phone, it's star six to unmute yourself. If you are on your computer, it's the lower left-hand side of your screen. Folks in the courtroom, anybody interested in providing public testimony? Doesn't look like it. Anybody online? Don't worry, this will not be your only opportunity. Okay, I do not see anybody unmuting themselves. So I am going to head, go ahead and recess the hearing. And the hearing is hereby recessed. It will be continued to our March 15th meeting in Arlington, which will be held at the Grand Quest Building. So we will, if you suddenly remember that you wanted to provide testimony, that is your opportunity, and will be your last opportunity to provide before the court considers the ordinance, probably that meeting as well, on the 15th. So with that, the hearing is recessed and we'll move on. Good to see you, Doug. All right, let's move into the consent agenda, which was amended to add the letter of support for Condon Arts Council as amended. Do you guys have any questions about it?
I do not.
Do we have a motion to approve it?
I moved to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, which consists of approval February 15th, 2023, regular meeting minutes, consider approval of February 15th, 2023, executive session minutes, consider approval of March bill's pending review, consider approval of amendment number four to IGA number 169508 with Oregon Health Authority for financing of public health services, and consider approval of letter of support for Condon Arts Council as amended. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I. I. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We do not have any unfinished business on the agenda, so we will move into new business. First thing up is 7.1, which is consider approval of position description and salary schedule for finance director. So I will kick this off, and then I'm assuming there are other folks who would like to provide input. So I'm, just kind of want to summarize why I asked for this to be on here. And for folks who are not aware of how these financial processes currently work. So for many, many years now, Gillum County's accounts payable, payroll, employee benefits, and employee files, and other related financial processes, our taxes and things like that, and payroll taxes have been managed by our county court. And then, in addition, our budget process and several of financial accounting processes that are not constitutionally required or statutorily required have been managed by our treasurer, Nathan. These, for folks who are unaware, these assignments are pretty unique to Gillum County. That is, we are one of the only counties in Oregon who do not utilize appointed staff to handle these financial functions. Instead, we have relied on the willingness of elected officials to take on what are, especially in terms of payroll and managing all of the benefits, significant extra duties that they are not required to, either by Oregon constitution or by statute. So I just want to say, like, we have been very fortunate. We have had elected officials who have volunteered to take on these extra duties. They have performed them well. But my view is that continuing to rely on this model creates some potential vulnerabilities in that if a current elected official or even a new elected official coming in decided that they no longer wanted to perform those duties, there's, they don't have to. They do this because they are trying to serve, I think, the needs of the county. But that doesn't in any way mean that they have to ever do that. They could decide at any point they no longer wish to do that. And any folks who are coming in after them down the road can also decide that they don't want to do that. And the potential vulnerability then is, we don't have additional staff that are appointed that know how these systems work. And so the purpose of today's discussion is to consider creating a new appointed position, title of finance director, which would be responsible for a variety of financial processes. You have a draft position description that outlines those. The way that it was drafted was that this position would be housed within the county court's budget and offices, and would work under the general supervision of the judge, mainly because I am the one who is there day to day and sitting right next to where this person would be working. I think this would also allow for greater alignment between and coordination between the work that Miranda's doing on employee resources. And then also would help to better align with some of the budgetary responsibilities and oversight that we, as the courts, are, are given through statute. So the draft position description that is in your packet was created using examples from Sherman and Jefferson County. We also pulled the financial positions over at North Central ESD. And in addition, you'll see in your packet, there's comparable compensation information, which sort of helped to guide the recommended salary schedule. And that's my spiel for now. Commissioners, do you have additional things, or do you want to hear from folks who want to provide input first?
Just wanted to have you here.
Okay, let's start with that. Go ahead, Ellen.
I'm just here today to ask the county clerk not to make a decision today and to allow feedback on the consideration of this new position. This is a huge change in government structure. I can see why back in the day, they did the treasurer and the clerk, because you have to have good separation of duties. And there needs to be checks and balances, and, and I was, and I know the other counties, like Laurel has three financial people, Sherman has two. I'm just seeing this one position. I'm just thinking, how, how are the checks and balances going to work there? You know, are they going to do it all? You're going to put it all on that one person? I'm assuming you checked with the auditors and legal, and they confirmed their meaning, the checks and balances on this. What, what's going to happen to these positions that you're taking these job descriptions away? Are you going to change anything? Are, are you thinking, like, my deputy? Are you, what, what's your plans for my deputy? Are you going to reduce her, their, their FTE? Are you going to? You know, Jolie? Is Jolie going to, are you going to remove this from Jolie? Are you going to remove payroll and accounts payable from Jolie's position? Are you going to leave that? And the roads that, during that, we determined.
Well, there's, there's a lot of the payroll that Jolie does, it has to go through Jolie to track projects.
Through IRIS.
Through.
So nothing will change?
Nothing changes in that. We have to, we have to track all, it actually, in Jolie's position with Iris 10 coming out, I perceive that she will get more to do through Iris and utilize it more.
But will she do accounts payable? No.
I, I really don't know all those pieces.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
The accounts payable that the road department does has to be tracked in the projects. So we have to track all those project costs regardless.
So are you saying there's not going to be any change? There's not going to be any change?
There's some integration and stuff they talked about. I don't know how all that works as far as payroll integrated from Iris and most of that, I don't know how that works.
I think it's going to depend honestly on where, where payroll systems go. And I would say, regardless of whether there's a finance director or not, that we are moving towards trying to streamline the way that we do time sheets, the way that we, we've, we've talked, several elected officials are on this building, we have talked privately about trying to streamline those systems so that we are not manually doing time sheets for every person. That is something that most of our colleagues and. That is something that most of our colleagues in other counties stopped years ago. We are behind on that. Um, so how that impacts positions, I think we'll have to see how that happens. But that is unrelated to whether there's a finance director or not. That's the direction that we would like to move regardless. Um, in terms of the impact to other staff, I mean, we are not bringing anybody else's, we're not bringing the deputies and we're not bringing Jolie's job descriptions up to change them. So I think the idea is that we would proceed with status quo. Um, and then assess as we go on how we need to refine processes, how these departments will work together. Um, but I still think you're going to need a deputy. I'm assuming the road department is still going to need some support in their office. Um, and so those positions, I think, will continue to exist. What their whole body of work looks like will change, but would change as technology changes too. Um, so I don't, I don't see them as being connected. As in this person is not displacing your deputy, nor are they displacing the office manager for the road and weed department. That's not, I think, the intention behind the position.
Definitely.
Because the clerk's office is unique. We have, our office has to be open five days a week. And that's the hard, that's the hard part. That's really why we need two people to be in there. Um, do you know what, the effective date? Are, are, is this planning for July one this full year? Do you have an effective date when this position will take effect?
Assuming that the court is forward with approving, we would start recruitment pretty much immediately.
And so are you saying I'll be done today? I'll be done doing payroll today? Um, uh,
No.
I'll stop my obligations.
Because we do not have a candidate who's been recruited. So, but you're kind of highlighting for me one of the dangers of having it in an elected official who can say, I'm done with payroll.
An employee said that too.
Today.
See you later.
Yes, you can.
I don't see a really much difference.
So I, I guess for training purposes, are you, are you thinking, are you going to get a new system? And there won't be any training necessary on our parts?
No, I think there would be training involved.
Absolutely.
Because
When I hear new time cards, I would assume a new accounting system would be part of that?
Correct.
So I could, you know, we wouldn't train all that. We couldn't train, right?
No. So the new person would be trained on the existing systems.
Then transferred.
Implementation, as you guys both know, implementation of a new financial system cannot happen on a day. That is like a eighteen months to two-year process. So the new person would learn the existing process and then would be part of the team that does the transition over. Miranda would be part of that as well because there would be H R-related, um, functions for employee files. Jolie would likely be part of that as well, looking at how Iris will, uh, interact with that new system. And so there would be a team that would go through that process, make recommendations to the court. The court obviously would have to approve paying for that transition. And then somewhere down the line, eighteen years or eighteen months, two years, then eventually there would be a new system, which this position would have implemented and would be fully trained.
What, what do you estimate the cost of this to be?
So there is a, um, there is a, it depends really on, in part, on what the court decides they would like to set the salary schedule at. Um, so there are, there is a suggested salary in here that ranges between sixty-five thousand and just over seventy-eight thousand, which is in alignment with Sherman County's, uh, finance director position.
But what about the rest of the, the time card issue, the, all of that stuff? Um, we're not set up over there. We haven't had computers at the shop for eight weeks tomorrow. You guys wouldn't go eighteen minutes without it.
Yeah, I get that.
And, I mean, it's, it's frustrating. We do not have the plugins, the, the setup to have laptops and stuff. Plus you get those big fingered guys up there pounding on stuff. It's, it's, it looks to me like you're creating a monster that doesn't need creating. Everything's working now. I, I just don't, I don't understand.
So it's not always going to work that way. I, I, I worked in the courthouse in the eighties and
Oh, I know, I know.
and, um, the county clerk did all the budget on a typewriter. They did the county court minutes. They did, they clerked for the circuit court even. And then the treasurer and the tax collector did all the financial stuff. Well, then they got a treasurer in there that couldn't do the financial stuff. So as you know, the stuff got moved to Rena who could handle it. And the budget got moved over there. So stuff is moved around in this courthouse for eons.
Well, it, I, I guess it's not broken. Why are we trying to fix it? Everything works and it's working good. It's pretty streamlined. The employees are happy. Um, I don't know. I just, it doesn't make sense to me.
I'm just worried. I don't want to be negative. What if this doesn't work? Where's it going to go? You know, we have two positions coming up for election. We have the judge and Commissioner Shannon's position coming up for election next year. What if we have a whole new court? Are we not going to worry about that, I guess? Or should we wait for the new court to make the new decision?
No.
I mean,
By that, by that thing, the idea that there may be a new court would mean that Pat and I for the next eighteen months stop doing any work for Gillum County. Because what if the next court decides they want to do something different? That
But this is pretty monumental. I mean, this is a huge change in government structure.
Isn't though? If you go to any other county in the state of Oregon, they have appointed financial people. There's a reason.
Well, they have one of them. Why? That's, I guess that's what brings.
Some do. Sherman County has a finance director. Like literally, if you look at what was written here.
Okay, that's my say.
Other folks? Nathan?
Yeah, I, I, my concerns are just similar, Ellen. I mean, realistically, a lot of things that I do that, you know, they are appointed. And I've thought a lot about, uh, the, uh, client time commitment. And really, you know, I'm glad to do them. It's not, it's not a huge burden on my office. I mean, it did go better at certain times of year. Well, I mean, there's been a deputy, deputy treasurer off and on. We've got a deputy about three quarters of the time the last twenty years. Currently we don't. But, you know, I had a deputy a couple of years ago and I can see an advantage to that. So I could understand one having own finances. Seems logical. Um, I think overall, my concern really is we have a structure in place. Whether it works or not, it's debatable depending on who you are. Um, it would be nice, instead of chasing the structure, like hiring a person and chasing it, maybe to vet that out a little more. Maybe have some, um, some meetings and maybe just outline, because we really do. It's important for our audit, our audits come back relatively clean. I think everybody's had a chance to look at them. Um, you know, part of that is our internal control that would all work pretty good. In my opinion, I mean, you ask the auditors, they're all, they're all to say. So I would be concerned about consolidating too many duties in the one office because, well, office, uh, by office, I don't mean elected, I mean person. Um, decentralized is generally better. It makes separation duties a lot easier. And that's kind of how we ended up where we are today. Not that the structure we have today is perfect or even what the county court maybe desires. But I just, you know, just touch the brakes a little bit, sit down, just think about some of these things a little more. That's, that's
So since you brought stuff up, I, I had a visit with you yesterday.
Absolutely.
We talked. It was a good, a good visit. You answered my questions. But I think one of the things I told you during my visit was I think sitting out in the audience like you guys, I thought that the county court was probably looking at financials that I wasn't seeing other than the bills pending review. And I, there, there isn't anything. So I asked you about that yesterday. I'm like, can, can we get a financial report to the court? I mean, I sit on the, um, fair board and we have a two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar budget and we have financials at our meeting. We sit and see the bills. The bank statements are sitting there. Uh, we have a seventy-eight million dollar budget and I'm looking at basically nothing. That turbes me. So we, I visited with you yesterday about getting reports to the court. You know, that's other things that you're not doing now that are going to be added on. You know, giving me the budget versus the actuals.
Yeah.
Giving financial statements that show how much money we have. Because if somebody asked me today how much money we have, I'd be like, I don't know.
And I, and I said yesterday, that's, that's fine and I understand.
And it's statutory. It's shall, not, you know, if you want to.
Well, this was discussed yesterday. The only thing that has been neglected and, you know, we go through a little history, but it doesn't matter, was the, the bank report. Um, the rest of it, it's all revenue expense report. So, I mean, I'm not saying you shouldn't have better financials or it wouldn't be a benefit.
But the revenue expense report's a real heartburn with me because we got one in August that was through, or one in October that was through August. Didn't get another one until the end of January or end of February that was through the end of the year. And then yesterday we got one through January. We're not getting them on a typewriter.
Well, that's, that's on me. I didn't get them out of time and I, you know, I wish my word had said something to me.
But I did. You and I had that discussion.
I didn't. Okay.
I mean, we, I said, how come we're not getting, I was in your office two weeks ago and said, how come we're not getting them? Well, you can get them anytime you want them. Your answer. And I, I guess we have to ask for them.
Yeah, so I'm, I, and I, or I formally asked you yesterday to, by the second meeting of the court meeting, to be able to get that stuff to us, so.
There's some things that are, you know, tiny.
You get a lot of, I mean, you get a lot of pending projects. I mean, ultimately, we have projects, we have projects, uh, we had a deputy treasurer way back when. We had a bunch, there was projects like shuttle station stuff. I'm going to tell you right now, I don't have the bandwidth to manage what's going on with all this stuff. I'm not going to get it done. So I could see the value in having somebody else.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I could, you know, I made some requests, like, uh, trying to find out what the host fees were that, you know, takes three weeks to, to get together. And I'm trying to work out who, you know, between ways, imagine us, who's going to pay for repairs on Cedar Springs Lane? And it, and I got a deadline and it took three weeks to get it. And that's problematic for me.
Okay.
And I, I think this person would be beneficial to you, Nathan.
Oh, I think so too. Absolutely.
I mean,
I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I just, I'm really concerned with the details. We need to make sure it's done right. I don't want to, I don't want to do it and have to redo it, have to redo it. I don't, I don't want to, I, I think we got, we're going to take the time after to do it. We need to do it right first time. I don't want to, I don't want to have this discussion here. Now this is embarrassing for all of us.
I do think though, that part of this, with any, anything that you do, any change, there are always iterations. You think it's going to work one way. Once you start actually going through a process, you, you realize areas where you didn't anticipate that there needs to be another checker of balance. There needs to be this step in place. So while I would say like, I am with you, like I, as you know, like I think and plan a lot before things come before the court. But I also have learned from being in here now for a little over four years that a lot of the times, the way that I think things are going to go, even when they've been carefully planned, don't go that way once you start implementing them. And that's just part of trying new things. Like there has to be some, uh, some allowance for us to, I think, try things, refine things as they move forward.
I mean, the challenge with this is, is the allowance is less than some of our other projects. We really do have a lot to answer to. Um, I mean legally for our audit, I mean, we have multiple audits. It, it really, there's more scrutiny in our offices than some of the other offices, as far as this is concerned.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that going forward, um, you know, if, if it's not working, feels not working, I mean, that's, that's fine. But I want to make sure that if we're going to fix it, it's actually fixed. I don't want to break it more if it's broken. So, and, you know.
But, but budget is a big, it's a big strain on your time, isn't it?
Uh, it is. It is. There's a certain times a year. I mean, to touch on Pat's point, so let's look at, let's look at the treasurer's office in that timeframe, but I didn't get the reference benefit report. What's going on? Tax collection. Audit. Year end. There's lots and lots of work in my office and I'm not complaining. I enjoy the work. But there's lots going on. So when, when I slip up, I, you know, I just, I need a little grace to say, hey, look, the treasury office is jammed that time here. Just, dude, what's going on?
Yeah, yeah. So, so that's my thought is, wouldn't it be helpful to have that other person?
Absolutely.
I mean, I don't see it as you being the treasurer over here and not having any contact with the financial director. I would see you guys working more together.
Working together, absolutely.
So.
And I don't, you know, I, if it's
And I would think it would be a benefit.
If it's under the court's auspices or, or, you know, there's been a deputy on and off per year. I mean, I just told you, seventy-five percent of the time for the last twenty years, there's been a deputy. So if you think it was some position like that would be better, I'm, I'm fine with that too. But we need to sit down and talk about it. I don't, I'm just concerned, I'm concerned we're rushing it. That's all.
I'm not against it.
I'm, I'm kind of like Liz. I've thought about it a lot even before I got in the court because my sister-in-law dealt with it over there in Sherman County. And I talked to her several times about it and she
She actually had the letter.
Yeah.
If you, if you want me to read it.
Go ahead.
Okay, so Tina Potter submitted a letter, uh, to the court asking for it to be part of the record. It says, uh, to Gillum County Court, "It is my understanding that Gillum County is concerned in creating an appointed position of finance director. I am writing this letter in support of this position. Having worked in Sherman County for sixteen years, I've experienced working with a finance director and found it very convenient and uncomplicated. The finance director took care of all payroll and budget issues as well as any human resource responsibilities. Chairman counting with the finance director, I had one person who I submitted all time sheets, accounts payable, accounts receivable and budgets to. If I needed my chart of accounts modified, the process was very quick and effortless. From her, I received all information regarding health insurance and their benefits, all budget forms, a revenue expenditure report each month approximately two weeks after the close of the month, any other budget reports or personnel forms that I may have requested. As these were her duties and she was not trying to wear other hats. In addition, she was able to respond to any requests in a timely manner and answer any questions I might have had. In essence, she was my one go-to person and I found that very efficient. Our county clerk and treasurer in Gillum County have taken on responsibilities out of necessity that in most counties would be handled by a finance director. This takes time away from their mandated duties and responsibilities. We have been fortunate to have people in these positions who have managed very well and do a great job. But that doesn't mean they should have to continue to carry the load. Thank you for your time, Tina Potter, Director of Gillum Wheeler, uh, Community Corrections." Um, additional, uh, comments, input from folks in the audience, from folks on Zoom? Go ahead, Chris.
Just a few thoughts. And, um, I've done government finance for sixteen years. I was a City of Condon reported treasurer and I was also the Gillum E S D Deputy Clerk and the North Central E S D Business Manager. And so I've done payroll, accounts payable, accounts receivable, budgeting, open meeting law and, um, understanding those laws as well as budget law. So just some things to think about, um, just from the outside looking in would be, um, you know, when, when I heard the letter, there was a lot of times it said one person. And, and the one thing we learned with auditors and the budget process and government finance is you never want one person. You never want one department, uh, they charge. And there may be a way to fix that or make sure that that occurs with this model. But just please be cognizant that this county has had a history of enmeshments. And, um, I'm not saying that would happen, but we need to protect you, Gillum County and its citizens to make sure the structure that's created protects us all. That's called separation of duties. And it is a standard government accounting practice to make sure that that is not done for one department or one person. So just making sure, we heard that there's two finance people in Sherman County. Isn't that what you said, from three and, and that's how they get around it? As opposed to, to one. So that's, that's just my input there. Okay?
I believe they're in the office with the treasurer over there to you, aren't they?
Hello?
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
Additional feedback or input? Something online. I'm not seeing anybody on the Zoom. If you, again, if you dialed it on your phone, it starts to unmute yourself. Lower left-hand side of your screen if you are there on your computer. Lowerly at hand side of your screen, if you are there on your computer. Commissioners?
I said, I said, I said.
One thing on the salary schedule that, um, when I'm looking at it, and this starts above the low of Sherman County, you know, and. I know we, um, did some comparisons before, it's a different person, calculation, contribution, than Sherman County, is that calculated into this?
It is, yes, so Sherman County, for people's reference, uh, does not pick up the six percent of their purse. For their employees, Gillum County does, and so the Sherman County numbers have six percent backed out of it already. So what you are seeing is what she actually takes, her actual, after, after the employee pays for her purse.
Okay, so, in the, in the. Suggested salary scale for this position, those numbers are an average of what, of the, of the surveys, how, how did we get to this? I didn't do any math to figure it out, I just wondered how we got to this.
These particular ones, so I basically.
The reason I ask Liz is because I think we compare better with Sherman County, Morale County, and New York Counties in the state.
Mm-hmm.
Based on the types of businesses we have, and, you know, Sherman County is more renewable, obviously, with no landfill. Morale County has a landfill, a lot of renewable, but a whole lot of other stuff, too. And so, we're kinda in the middle of those two, and that's really why, when you start throwing in, um, you know, even like Jefferson County, I don't know how much.
No, I just wanted you to see the whole.
Yeah.
I also included E S D, because they have people who are doing financial accounting. It, in particular with E S D, it's complicated, because they have multiple school districts coming in, so I thought that was helpful, and because they're a block away from us, and understand where their folks are being paid. Um, but, really, from the step perspective, is I was trying to get us as close as I could to Sherman. Um, but their, their step schedule is such that we actually can't match it, so, because of the way.
And they top out above what this is.
Correct, and theirs is over a longer, uh, like, they have a longer range between their bottom and their top than what we do.
They have more steps?
Um, I actually, um, think that they may have, oh. I don't know if they have the same amount, but it looks like their percentage per step is significantly different for ours, so it was really hard. Like, basically, what I did was try to pick a number that was close to where Sherman County started and ended. But within the current step thing that we're using for all of our other employees, so we guarantee after one year, it's X amount of percentage, after, you know, from two to. Three, it's another, and then, you know, so, we already have those things in place, and so what you're seeing is basically me trying to find a number that was. Somewhere close to where Sherman County is, but fit it within already established steps, um, that we do for all of our other employees. I don't know if that satisfied you.
Yeah, I mean, that answer, that sounds true, but the. First contribution, and then, I mean, I don't, it's not, we're not that different than what Sherman County is, and they actually probably have. I mean, they've got, with Waste Management, that's a, a big deal, and we have a lot of finances that fall through the.
Correct.
Fall through on the Waste Management stuff, too, that they don't have to deal with.
Yeah, I mean, just as an example, like, as you see, like, the Sherman County Finance Director, that's a twenty thousand dollar gap between the starting step and the end. Ours, the most you're gonna get is probably thirteen to fifteen thousand between beginning to end, and so you can't. There's no way for me to match what Sherman County is doing, without either completely lowballing somebody at the end of their career. Or starting them up so high that it's, you know, really out of line with where the rest of our staff is, so I tried to pick a middle ground, um.
Well, in my opinion, the whole thing is that, um, I think there's some long-term risk to Gillum County leaving the way it is. Without question whether I'm here or not here, I think there's long-term risk, and then, um. Well, I had another thought in last call, the fact that we are doing so much manually, to me, is problematic, and I know Dewey likes manual. So, I understand where he comes from, but, you know, in my lifetime, where technology has gone, and where it's going. We can't stay stagnant with technology, we have to move forward, and that's where efficiencies come from, and you save money. And that's why technical stuff moves forward, is because you get efficiencies. And whether you like it or don't like becoming technical, we're in that world. And, you know, it's, it's part of where we are, and it's gonna get more so than less. They don't build data centers all over the country, because there's gonna be less technology.
Just keep going back to paper.
I just wanna make a point of that, um, we haven't received a traffic citation since the twenty-fourth of February. We're waiting, they're out there, they're out there in cyberspace, they're floating around, people are calling, I wanna pay my ticket, I wanna pay my ticket. So, I said to Chris, we've discovered not just Gillum County. So, my friend, sometimes, technology doesn't work the way it should, it doesn't mean we shouldn't go that way. But, that's an example of, we can't put all our days in that basket all the time, sometimes it doesn't work that way.
I don't think it's whether we should or not, I think we have to, we don't have any choice, yeah.
Go ahead.
So, I wanna, maybe bring a little renewed ability, I was working for a company in North Dakota, and, uh, we had a lot of people there, and we did our time card, we wrote it down. For about the first three to five years, and then we went to the, it was on the cell phone. So, the time card was on the cell phone, and we're going, oh, man, I'm on salary and everything, but why the heck, we gotta do this? And it actually, once figured out, wasn't too long, it was pretty nice, it was really a pretty good system. Just going on your phone, and, you know, there'd be ten of us that would go in there, and they'd have codes that was written out by the people in the county, I guess, but just codes that would pertain to each job. And then, when you're doing that, you just put one, zero, zero, three, and eight hours, and it was pretty simple, so that's pretty easy to do, actually. And it definitely saved time in the office, 'cause I needed the office manager and everything, so.
Well, I just had a meeting with ODOT this morning. In their shop, there, there's five laptops, everybody has their own laptop, and. The ODOT District Manager, it's a nightmare for them. Because, guys forget stuff. They can't go back and change it, once it's, once you hit enter, or send, whatever, it's done. Well, then, you can't make that stuff back up, and it's causing them, it, it's causing management a lot of heartache. Um, as far as tracking stuff, so if you go that way, we'll probably still ma, stay manual. Just because it's easier to, to make adjustments than it is electronic, so.
Yeah, back to Mark's thing.
Yeah.
Jared does the same thing, he has an app on his phone, he puts his time on it, at the end of the month, he, he emails it to me, so, yeah.
It sounds like you guys have already made up a plan, so it's a done deal, so.
It's not a done deal.
That's why I asked, how much is this gonna cost to implement? Are you gonna buy every county employee a computer to log in on?
Most of our county employees have computers, do they?
Well, I've got, I've got ten guys over there that don't.
Do they all have smartphones?
Okay, are you gonna pay them to use their smartphone?
Possibly.
Well, I'm just, I'm just throwing out, I'm throwing out all this stuff.
We don't obviously have that answer today.
Okay.
And I think those are all the common causes of which way you go going forward. I mean, I'm not gonna say that staying silent with manual isn't part of the way the system ends up, I don't, I, you know.
My, my first hearing of this was last week.
Guys out in the, are not gonna work the same as somebody that's sitting in an office, obviously.
I know you're looking at the practical side, I get that.
Okay, there we go, common sense, and it just, it's just, that's, I don't see it working very good for my side of the county operation. Not only over there, but downstairs over here, where Jolie has to track all of our stuff. For the auditors, for cost accounting, for everything.
Yeah, I can't, I mean, Irish Ten's gonna roll out. They're kinda in the rollout now, we're going through training next week. And, you know, I, until we find out what that looks like, it's, you know, I don't know, I'm sure, I just, I think there's more to that system than we even come close to utilizing. That can help with all that, then, then they, you know, obviously, you can get to an Irish Ten if they didn't think, move to an Irish Ten if they didn't think they were improving it. So.
Additional feedback from the public? Comments or questions from the commissioners?
Again, you got any more?
Me? I just know that, uh, change is hard, it always is hard for people. And I, I was telling Pat when I come in here this morning, that when I was on the school board, we went kindergarten. Was a half a day, and we put it to full day. And all the, and, uh, here come all the people mad, because their kids weren't gonna get naps, and it was too long of a day, and. Da-da-da-da-da, and then we went to the four-day week, which was another whole thing. We took kindergarten back to four-day per half a day again, and all, some of the people that complained when it went from. You know, a half a day to a full day, were now back complaining about it going back to a half a day. So, it's, it changes just hard for people sometimes, I think, so. Um, yeah.
People change.
Yeah, they do, but I truly believe this will be a good thing for Nathan. Um, I think Nathan can work with them. Um, it'll help him with, I think he was getting behind on some of the reconciling of the counts and stuff, I think that'll help, um.
It all takes time, when you've got competing priorities, you know?
Yeah.
But, you know, the ball covers, like, would be under Ellen's supervision, I think, or currently, you know? And it's just payroll is a, is a big dog, and I, you know, Liz and I.
Well, and it doesn't get any easier.
Yeah, well.
And Ellen will probably tell you that, they just keep filing more stuff on all the time.
Yeah, well, Liz and I talked about that offline, too, um, you know, I really support this, I'd outsource payroll, because it is, it changes constantly. There's always something, I mean, and if it just outsourced it, they could kick a file to us, we loaded our system, and it's done. You know, I, I.
Oh, I worked down at the bus company when they did the A D P.
Mm-hmm.
Oh my God, the people, the employees complained about that?
Well, they're gonna complain, I, I, it's, that's not necessarily, yeah, we're trying to look at what works best, so. So, I mean, that's just something that, you know, I don't, I don't think about payroll, I don't do payroll, I have nothing to do. But, other places I worked, we did payroll, yeah, somebody else did it, they just kicked us a file. You know, they all, we didn't, we used smartphones, it didn't exist, we had cards, everybody swiped their card, their grown-ups' card. Beep, 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 and it tracked everybody's time. You know, I worked at a place, we dragged it manually, it's not. It's not as fast as beep, 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 but beep, beep, beep makes mistakes, or they forget to use their card, or blah, blah, blah. I mean, there's always issues, always issues, so, we're just trying to minimize the issues, to minimize the risk of that kind of draw. That's, I mean, that's the point, that's the whole deal, so.
I don't feel we're complaining, I feel we're just letting you know our concern.
Yeah.
Well, there hasn't been any other form to voice any concerns yet, right, I mean, this is a new idea, so.
Yeah, and I, and, you know, I get concerned when. And I'm not pointing fingers, but when we're responsible for the fiscal activities of the county. And some of that is not at our fingertips and handy to get all the time, and, and it's, you know, I mean, Nathan just talked about some of those issues, that it's. To me, it's, um, we don't have it in the right spot, we're, we're mandated to things, too.
Sure.
That we're.
For the best of our ability.
Good.
I also think there's a stigma in our culture, that the state government spends too much money practically, and brings in too many employees for no reason. That we're getting real popular activity in government, and I really believe that's part of it, you know, for me, when I hear, oh yeah, we're gonna bring another person in, pay him seventy-five thousand dollars. You know, I just kinda raise up the, or a little dangle, oh, what the heck, what are we hearing this for, so I'm sure that's part of this a little bit. You know, but I see, you know, financial statements, when I hear that financial statements aren't brought to the county court, and haven't been for several years. I feel that goes on the county court, like, why wasn't that brought up years ago, and, and actually mandated, because how can a business run properly without having?
It is mandated.
It is mandated, it, what happened was, is I didn't send them out, so.
So, if you just reply, or if you're just standing there, it hasn't been reviewed or something?
No, it wasn't, well, there was a structural, there's been a structural change in my office last year, too. So, originally, I didn't have a deputy, I didn't have a deputy, we removed a deputy, so I've been trying to juggle all that, too, so.
That's my mission.
And this was something I was gonna bring up during the budget process anyway, was, was potentially adding a deputy or something to my office, 'cause I, you know, I do, I feel the strength, so. I, you know, it's not that I don't support it, I just wanna make sure that.
See, and that, for me, doesn't make sense to put stuff that's responsible, to hire somebody. To put stuff that the court is responsible under the treasurer who's not responsible for.
Sure, I mean, I manage, I mean, I manage loans, I don't have anything to do with those loans, I try to do my best to manage them, or I manage, I mean, what else? I don't know, there's also, and it's, and it's just little fractions, like, it's not, it's none of the, none of the stuff the court's asking you to do, other than the, the budget process. None of it takes a lot of time, unless something goes wrong, and when something goes wrong, it takes hours to track down payments that we can't find.
Well, like, like B L M?
Right, no, I have to have, I need a date, I need to know when it was supposed to be here, and what, where, where did it go? You know, we've gotta, and just, and tell me the amounts of start, but it, you know, so, and we did, as soon as I had the date, I found it, I mean, I can't, it didn't take ten minutes, but until. Until, so it's just, that little stuff just takes, it takes a huge amount of time, so it's not.
So, let me ask you this, when, when it comes in, and it's in the bank statement, and you're not sure where it goes?
I go around and ask the offices.
Okay, so apparently, you didn't make it over to the rodent weed.
I did make it to the rodent weed, I didn't know they had, well, we had a chain.
Cause I think, are they the only ones that get B L M money?
No.
There's more.
Sheriff's Department gets them all.
Okay.
And it wasn't coded, it didn't say B L M on the bank statement, it has, I'll show it to you.
So, do they not send any emails out, or anything?
See, it depends on who sends electronic payments, we're really getting in the weeds here, but.
Yeah.
It depends, electronic payments, some of them, so B L M ones usually come in Treasury Street ten, B L M. Well, these, these didn't say that, they said something else, and it's somebody that another vendor used, so what happened was, I coded it to the wrong vendor.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, and part of that's just, they need to center business devices, and, and that's something that, that's been on my list to actually improve internally. We need a, a lot of places to have a way to claim payments, right? And I've just handled it case by case.
We, we don't receive, we don't receive any. Uh, I guess, you'd call it the, a receipt that they, that state or the feds send us, but it just goes to nature of the.
So, would, would it be?
Depends on the department.
Would it be helpful for you, like, I, I guess, if, maybe if Doug takes a bill into Jolie, and she sends it out to the weed department, then she gives you a copy of that bill?
Sure, that's, we, we, I've talked about this, we're gonna do from now on, but she changed positions, and Terry, as well as things Terry used to do it, and Jolie didn't know.
Yeah.
So, it wasn't, it wasn't, it was lost, it wasn't misplaced.
It was there, it just was.
There, so, but these, these kind of things crop up, it does, it takes a lot of time to solve that, so, when I tell you, I mean, as I talk about this, too, like. Basically, I'm, I'm busy, but when something like that happens, it kinda derailed my train. I mean, I'm working about, and I feel, I don't know, maybe Ellen will disagree, but I feel Ellen's office is the same, she's working at capacity. You know, if, if nothing goes wrong, things are fine, but once the, when something, when there's some other stress applied, it's a little too much, so. You know, I'd, that's, I've kinda come around the idea of the, on deputy position, well, I, we called it, I, it wouldn't have to be a deputy, it could be a staff accountant, or it could be. And the court could assign duties to somebody that the treasurer oversees, there's no reason that couldn't happen. Or, you know, I, I'm just a supervisor at that point, or, so I don't know, it's just.
So, but I'm like, wouldn't it be more helpful to have a financial director than a deputy?
You're still gonna be having somebody who's gonna help, right?
Well, but it comes down to, um, we're back to separation of duties, and you gotta, like, we just need, we, we need to sit down and talk about that, because it's. You gotta draw a diagram, you have to sort it all out, it's not necessarily cut and dried. I can't, I mean, we can sit here and do what this, what this, all day long, it, it really, a committee or something to discuss it. Maybe pull some people in from other counties that have finance directors, and see how their internal control works, so, I don't know, I'm just. I'm just thinking out loud, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
The, the confusion of separation of duties confuses me. The, the confusion of separation of duties confuses me in that, man, you have to get to a separation of duties by taking duties away from the people responsible for it?
You may have to.
I mean, that.
Yeah. I mean, it's.
But one of the benefits of having it under the county court is there are multiple people working in that office. And so.
And there's also cross-training that can be done. If you lose a person that does payroll, you can have cross-training in place that has that covered.
Right. This is kind of a schedule. Helen and I, we've got random turnover in the clerk's office. I mean, we're going to get any deputy, well, current deputies not cross-trained to do payroll, but new one could be. Or we discussed cross-training between our offices. Ellen signs the offices, actually work together quite a bit. So when I had Kelly, I said, well, we should, we should cross-train. I mean, Kelly's done payroll before. She worked her, you know, there could have been cross-training her there, but then she got moved. You know, we just haven't really, I don't feel the structure's really settled since we moved Kelly's position. And, you know, it's just getting to be budget time. It's just getting to be the time that we asked for. You know, I would go ask the budget committee to fund a position and then try to create a position, right? So in my, the way my brain works, I guess, okay, we're getting budget time. Well, I need to think about what this position would look like and, and so, I, I'm glad we had this discussion, really. I mean.
Additional input, feedback from folks in the audience? Anybody on Zoom? Commissioners? I'm not seeing anyone unmuting, but again, if you are on Zoom and you dialed in on your phone, it just star six to unmute yourself. If you are on your computer, lower left-hand side of your screen. Is there anybody that wants to ask a question? Provide input. Not seeing anybody. Any additional input in the courtroom? Commissioners, would you like to proceed?
I'm going to be the bad guy. I move to approve the position, uh, description and salary schedule for finance director as presented and authorize the county court staff to update the non-represented salary schedule accordingly.
Second.
It's been moved down seconded that we approved the position description and salary schedule for finance director as presented to authorize county court staff to update the non-represented salary schedule accordingly. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to seven point two. Uh, consider approval of revised special projects grant program guidelines. So I'll do a just quick and then Delaney can jump in too, because we did this together. Um, so as you remember, back on the first, we updated the guidelines for our capital investment and operational support programs. Purpose today is to look at some updates to the special projects grant program. Um, so we, Delaney and I are proposing some interesting changes. Maybe we'll see what you think about it. You want to walk them through it?
Sure. So first off, uh, one thing I would like to do for the capital project portion of the grant, that's for people who are coming in asking for a building, a small shed or upgrading athletic infrastructure, that we increase it from twenty to thirty thousand, since we just made those changes to the, the large, the capital investment grant. So that way we can still, because our, I think the twenty thousand dollar cap is a little unrealistic with some of the construction costs and things like that for today. So raising it to thirty thousand, I think, is a more manageable number for people.
So the thought being like, say, our school districts who have been coming in under the, uh, capital investment up until now, this would possibly allow them to continue to do some of their smaller projects. But we wanted to make sure that there's sufficient, there's enough money that they can actually, knowing what construction costs are doing, um, that they could actually complete a project for the amount that we're granting. So that was the thought process behind there. It's a kind of a swap for them for a couple of years while they're out of the funding pool.
Yeah.
And then for adding a cap on the amount of available funds for community events at seven thousand five hundred dollars, I looked at the history of what we funded for community events. I think seventy-five thousand, or not seventy-five thousand, seventy-five hundred, excuse me, is a good threshold um, to set for those events. So that's coming in like the Condon Scholarship Foundation Dinner, uh, the tuition for TOTS event that Condon Early Learning Center does, those would fall under that community event. And then adding in a new third.
Looked at those advanced to see where they were.
Yeah. So seventy-five hundred, I think, is a good threshold. And then looking to create a new third category. So this is for community innovation projects. This would be set at twenty thousand dollars. And this is for those things that we get special projects grants for that aren't for building something or improving something or a community event. So like the, the requests that we get from the Chamber of Commerce for their innovative business programs, their Kickstarter, their pop-up market that there's, that we approved for Arlington. So those would fall under this twenty thousand dollar limit. That was what it was set before. And I think is a manageable number for those additional innovative product projects.
If the dollar amount hasn't changed, so.
Yeah. It would just be adding a new category because currently we only list in there community events and capital improvement projects under the special projects grant. So this is just kind of capturing what we've already been improving under special projects, but giving it a home and a dollar limit since we are increasing the capital projects one to thirty thousand. I still wanted to leave, suggest that we leave the cap at twenty thousand for those other projects.
And I think also as well, seeing that in the grant guidelines may encourage folks like, somebody says, gosh, wouldn't it be nice if we did X to solve Y? Then there's a place that they can come bring that creative idea and potentially ask for funding. Whereas before it had to kind of fit neatly under, is this an operational expense? Is this a, this way we have, like when staff is reviewing, they've got a place to put those projects where they're not questioning like, does this even meet what the court is wanting to see out of these applications? So.
I think after, especially after going through last year's grant approving them, I think this is something that will help the review committee going forward, having a little more clear guidelines. Um, we also are suggesting some administrative language updates just to mirror what the changes that were made in the operational support and the capital investment. And then just some other small edits in there.
Questions or concerns about this approach, guys?
No, sounds well thought out.
Delaney did an excellent job.
I move to approve the guidelines for special projects grant program as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the guidelines for the special projects grant program as presented. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Delaney, before we move on, do you want to update folks on where we are for the applications for the other two?
So we are going to be opening applications tomorrow for the, um, capital investment and operational support grant. Liz and I did the background work on updating the application to match the revisions we made to the guidelines. Uh, those grants are going to be due back by April thirteenth at five P M. To the grant review committee, so we will review them and then present our recommendations to the budget committee.
Repeat this grant, grant.
The operational support and then the capital investment.
So what was the, was, I thought it was capital. Which one are we doing?
It's going to be on a rolling, but we're, we haven't opened it for the rolling basis yet. So for this initial, like round of applications, in order to go into the budget committee review process, we're going to have them do by April thirteenth, but really the only one that matters for us, the operational support. The capital investment can be done on a rolling basis, but this will just be for the.
And then the budget process, we're going to plug some money in there for a rolling.
Yeah. So what we'll do is the operational support, just to clarify if there's anybody listening that would normally be applying. So tomorrow, the grant applications for both operational support and capital investment will be up on the website. If you are operational support, which means you are either a housing provider, a healthcare provider, or a childcare provider, the share, your applications are due back on April thirteenth. Those will be reviewed by our normal grant process and then go through the budget committee. When it meets on May second, which is the second budget meeting, we'll actually approve the funding for that. The, the capital investment, that application will open tomorrow, but we are accepting applications on a rolling basis. So whenever your project is ready for prime time anywhere in the upcoming fiscal year, you'll be able to submit an application, staff will review it and then get it scheduled for the court's consideration. So that's rolling. However, I will note that as soon as the funds are promised, then that's it for the year. So if you've got a big ask, might want to get, at least give us a heads up that it's coming. Um, so that we know to plan for other community, uh, projects that are coming in. And yes, to Pat's question, typically what I do is I put, um, I think last year it was about three million into a line item. Um, and so it would likely, we may look at actually increasing that if we're anticipating there'll be housing projects or other things that will take big bites out of that at once. Um, we might look at increasing that just so we have flexibility to fund people late in the fiscal year. If, um, if there's some, I know like Jed, I'm looking at Jed for their grade school project. They may have abatement done midway through the fiscal year and be looking for funding for kickstarting the next phase. So I think we'll want to maybe talk to the budget committee about increasing that amount so there's some flexibility as we get later into the fiscal year. Um, questions about any of that?
I think so.
All right, rocking and rolling. Um, go ahead.
Oh, just curious on that. So the private sector, like myself, if I'm putting in storage units or building houses, I'm able to apply for that or just? Just.
No, so the eligible entities are either government partners, nonprofits, uh, community organizations. But what has happened in the past and what can happen is, for instance, like PCDC is a good example. They are using public funds. They are a nonprofit entity. So they are the ones that are actually responsive to us in terms of how the public funds are spent, that they are able to partner with private sector. So for instance, say if the court wanted to do something, they could apply for something and then be working with a private developer on the other, on the actual project implementation. So that's how that kind of works.
Try to pick up the private sector a little more than we used to through other.
Partnerships. We just ask that if you're, if you have a project, for instance, you're finding an eligible entity to be the sponsor of that project and then work with you through the process. So it could be, uh, the Chamber of Commerce does that often. The court, I think, has a willingness to do that. So there's some public entities that can actually do the application and then partner with the private sector on the project.
Okay.
Uh, any other questions? Okay, let's move on. Uh, we're on seven point three, which is consider approval of revised fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Yes, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty.
Oh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Sorry, three years ago.
Way back.
Special projects grant agreement with Arlington Education Foundation. Delaney, do you want to explain why we have an agreement from three years ago on the court's agenda?
I will gladly take this on. So back in our last round of special projects grants that we approved last May, actually June first, I think is when the meeting was, we reviewed a request from the Arlington Education Foundation for additional funds. They had a grant request that was for a website. Well, when I was doing my review, their grant in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one that they were funded from the county was for website design. Upon reviewing their application, they did not use the funds that we awarded in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one for their website. They used it for a different program that they partnered with the school on, without coming back to the county and amending their grant, as is the process that they agreed to in their grant agreement. So before they were eligible to receive the funds that we awarded for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, they needed to get their twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one grant amended. They finally just got back to me, um, last, early this month with their documentation to amend their twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one grant. So I'm asking to, basically we're doing the steps in reverse. They've already spent the funds.
So the money's gone, let's fix it on the backside.
Yes. So I am just asking for you guys to approve the amended agreement to get them in line for the funds that they've already spent. So then we can release the funds that they received for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Just a learning opportunity for our partners that we expect that they spend the money on, for grants on the projects they have identified for us. And that if they change, we are flexible. We would like to ask.
So they didn't sign that, they didn't read the agreement they signed.
They need to come, I think, from what I can tell, they've had some change in who helped in that, in their organization. And so it wasn't well communicated what the process would be like to change things. But now they are aware and so they are doing that work to amend it.
So they amended it to, to reflect what they.
The soaring to success program. Yes. So that's what the draft amendment covers, the soaring to success program that they did in partnership with Arlington School District.
So this will retroactively make them compliant.
So they can qualify for their.
So that they qualify for their existing or pending grant that we still are holding the funds.
How come they haven't asked for the money that we're having, that we're holding?
They have, but they were, they were, it's communicated to them that they cannot qua, that when we approved, that was part of the motion that we would not approve releasing those funds until this grant was.
Until this.
So, so the educational part of this has been through their request, finding whether funding is and find out why they.
And then being denied their distribution until they clean up the problem in the previous application.
Well, I move to approve the amended fiscal year twenty twenty, dash twenty twenty-one special projects grant agreement for Arlington Education Foundation.
I second. It's been moved and seconded that we approved the amended fiscal year twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, good lord, special projects grant agreement with Arlington Education Foundation. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Uh, we added seven point four, which is a discussion on where we are with congressionally directed spending requests. I will kick off what I have been working on and then maybe we can.
Everybody keeps telling me what you've been working on when I talk to them about it.
Oh, yeah. I've been, I've been busy. Um, so basically what I did, when, so for the public certification, our, uh, federal delegation, particularly Senators Wyden and Merkley, um, have an opportunity to request federal funding for community initiated projects that fit existing federal programs. So it's very, it's a very complicated process. Basically, what I have done to address it or to try to advocate for our folks is I looked at the list of what Merkley got funded last year. And I looked for projects that were similar to projects that I know are pending in our community. This is tricky because there are a lot of, for instance, wastewater projects that have a whole history that have to be documented with state and federal agencies of having problems with drinking water, for instance, which are not necessarily applicable here, even though like I could see some housing developments that probably need water and sewer systems put into them. But whether they would qualify is kind of a question because we don't have an issue with clean drinking water. At least that's been identified. Um, so.
Liz, is that all around clean drinking water? Is there any? Do they look at any lack of sufficiency, of enough drinking water?
Good question. Um, so I think Delaney and I have shared with you the documentation and sort of what it looks like. So basically we get a packet from Merkley's office that says, here are all the potential programs. The catch is within each of those, there is a federal statute that is listed that says, go to the federal statute. And then it outlines the actual requirements of the grant or the program. So sounds easy enough, but then when you start digging into that, those regulations are often, um, cross, uh, referencing other regulations and definitions. So they'll say like, uh, for instance, this program can fund communities who have X, Y, and Z as defined under federal statute, da, da, da. So then you have to go chase to the next federal statute and see if the community itself qualifies. Um, and so what we're finding is that it's a, without having, and then on top of that, we don't have projects that are fully informed. So some projects may qualify, but because we haven't gotten far enough in envisioning them, I can't make a strong case.
Well, that's really what Dan and I talked about yesterday with what we're looking at in, on the north end is that getting, we're near the top of the heap, you better be shovel ready and ready to roll.
Exactly.
So far from that, with that project, we can't get there right now?
Correct. So I did look at housing. I looked at childcare. I don't think there's anything for childcare that I could find, at least now. Although my understanding is there's some legislation that if Merkley can get it passed, might provide funding for childcare facilities in the future. So that may be an option. Um, so the one project that I felt. That I felt like I could. Get across the finish line possibly is I noticed in Merkley's funding request that there were several rural theaters. That he put funding in for. And so I chased down the, uh, federal, uh, statute to see what it was. And there, there is a USDA program for community facilities. Community facilities in rural areas are, are defined. They can be actually, uh, controlled by nonprofits. As long as they're fulfilling certain community goods and needs. And so I have gone through what is a pretty lengthy process of working with the USDA to pre-approve. The Liberty Theater. On Main Street because it is now owned by a nonprofit. And they got back to us yesterday that they think the program is likely. Or the project is likely to be eligible. Which was the first threshold to put in an application. And that, that could potentially qualify for the top amount of match because of the size of the community and the median income here. So that is the one project. That I have pending. P S, by the way, all the applications are due by Friday at nine.
That's why I want to just have a discussion and see if we're missing anything out there, if there's stuff you're working on, we don't know about. I couldn't think of anything.
No, the, the one that I am moving forward is the Condon Arts Council, when they purchased the Liberty Theater. As part of their due diligence, did a walkthrough of the theater to identify all of the problem areas. So they have a punch list of everything that needs to be fixed within the theater. I took that to Jeff Schott. Not at, at any official capacity and just said, how much do you think this would cost? Knowing what you know about building materials, all of the things. Knowing this is historic building that's going to have to, you know. Go through extra hoops, uh, because of where it is and what it looks like. He, uh, told me to plan on a probably one point five million dollar project. Um, and so I asked Merkley's office for one point one two five, which is the maximum amount we can ask under the program. So I have that, uh, there are community organizations who are aware that we're applying and are, uh, putting together letters of support to go with the application package. Um, I told Condon Arts Council that I would go ahead and take a stab at doing the actual application and narrative. So we're pretty much through with that. And we just have to do some final budget kind of tidy up, um, probably this afternoon after we wrap up our meetings today and it should be ready to go probably by tomorrow. Um, so that is the one. And then we're going to need to really push, I think, Merkley every time we have communication with our staff that, hey, listen. We didn't get funded last year. We are only putting in one project this year. And it is really important to this community to have that theater be structurally sound and all of the great work that. The Arts Council has been doing in terms of providing access to performing arts, all of those things. Really is depending on having a facility that is safe and modern, um, to be able to support their work. So that's my update.
Good. Let's put those out.
Yes, but for future housing projects, I do think there will likely be an opportunity next year. To do that. It's just, I feel like we've got to get the project scope dialed in a lot more. And then start the process a lot earlier of. Working with our partners who are developing to make sure they're developing it in a way or envisioning in a way that's going to fit under those.
We're, we're going to have to look at it just so you know, Jed, you know, the plotting and planning and zoning and. All that stuff has to be in place before. But we got spring and May of twenty four. Can we get there with? You know. With, with, with a good plan. So we can attempt to get some of this.
Yeah. So that's where we are. Um, and I will keep you posted once the application goes in, um, and what, I mean, that these bills. They don't get passed until October if Congress is doing its job, most likely January of next year is when they'll actually do it. Um. So it, it's still, we've got months and months until we'll actually hear anything, but, um, just everyone, if you see Merkley. Put in a plug for that theater project and remind him that he didn't fund us last year and he owes us.
If you want to do a tour of waste management, we're trying to figure out how to. So maybe we'll see.
If he comes into waste management, let's think about bringing him down to the theater too.
If they want, they'd like to give him and Ron both, but, um. We're going to take Dan out. I got Dan set up and we're going to do a poll of waste management, but I think some plan and then Dan will have to do. You know, yeah, you guys need to come see this. It's important. They've got the whole gas issue and all that that they want to. Have a discussion with certain people that might. Be trying to scuffle it through legislature.
Um, okay, so anything else on that piece? If not, so we are scheduled next to go into an executive session. Pat, are you anticipating? I am not anticipating a decision about labor negotiations or are you?
No, but, um, on the. On the, um, real estate side, we might keep Jed in here.
We can do that. Um, so what I would like to do then is to go into announcements in next meeting so that if folks want to drop off, they don't miss that point. Then we'll go into executive session. Uh, for folks, uh, at the end of this meeting, we're going to an executive session. We are not going to be making a decision coming out of it. Um, and so if you want to drop off after we get through announcements, you're welcome to. You will not miss anything. Um, so with that, uh. We have a work session scheduled with the Port of Arlington at one this afternoon. Other taxing districts are invited. Lots of important topics on the agenda. And next meeting is, uh, March fifteenth, which will be held in Arlington. And then I'll turn it over to you, Pat. What you got?
So, what, 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 you turn one over to me now?
What are you up to? Announcements.
So what am I up to? And been up to has been a bunch. I did in the second North Corr meeting. Obviously starting the budget process there, which will be interesting. We're going to do both at the same time. Um, met with Mayor Buckton over our, um, NDA status. Um, last weekend and had a real good meeting with him. Um, had, we've had an E O C A, E O C A meeting since the last meeting and an Eastern Oregon caucus call. That was the road department in here last week, um, to go over, have them review all their job descriptions and see. They thought we had everything in there that should be. And, uh, Miranda was part of that process. And then I've done a couple of A O C meetings, a local government meeting last week and. Membership meeting on Monday, which was my first A O C membership meeting since you passed the.
Passed the torch.
Passed the torch and. They, they're asking. Commissioner or, yeah, Commissioner Schaefer from Yountell County is the chair. He's asking for. Um, help from the counties to reach out to sponsors in your area to help sponsor and try to reduce the burden of. The shortfall that they see coming from counties having to pick up that slack and see if we can get more sponsorship involved in. I noticed on their list of sponsorships, Waste Management was on there, but Avon Green is not.
Hey.
Brookfield is not. And we've got some other smaller ones that could be on there too. So I did send those two to Kristen plus, um. Jake Stevens from New Sun. So there's some renewable. Companies that need to be sponsors. So.
Great.
We got that in play and then, um. I'm going to go to the A O C open house. Session, A O C meetings and, um. They've asked me and a couple of other commissioners to attend the county college dinners for the next three months to kind of get some. Old commissioner, I wouldn't say I'm an old commissioner.
Depends on how they define old.
But some commissioners have been doing the job for a while to sit down and have dinner with the brand new ones that are coming on board. So I thought that'd be a. Interesting. If you guys can introduce when you're. Uh, yeah, that's just a lot of stuff going on and a lot of meetings coming up and.
Sounds good. What you got going on there? So we'll have a public. Help staff meeting on March thirteen. Before county courts, we'll update you at county court. And I'm going to go to the. CAC meeting, ride with Dewey on. Um, the seventh?
Yes.
We have a meeting. We'll go do a tour of waste management and then we'll have our meeting at five o'clock, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's about it for me.
And you, you've got county college you're doing.
Yeah, we did that, which Pat should have been there for the transportation thing. He would have thought that was really interesting.
I've been there.
Did you go to the?
Was it Marion County Public Works?
Yeah.
You got to go to.
No, I mean, I, I didn't get the those you got because you're in person. I didn't.
Yeah, we, we actually had the meeting out there. And then we got to tour all around there.
I'm sure that you're getting much more out of funding co, county colleges than I did doing all mine on Zoom.
I don't know. I was, I was getting pretty sleepy the last hour.
Okay, I have a, a to do list when.
Yeah.
When we're ready for it.
Yeah, but they, they, they talked about that iris system a lot. They had one person that.
But we're doing, we're doing a meeting, um, a training or introduction for Iris, Julie and Miranda the next week. So.
Yeah, they offered, they offered on Monday. They offered beta testing to some counties.
It's Monday, but what day?
Six.
Okay.
It's in the afternoon. Um, they offered beta testing for people to go on and pre-test it before they roll it out, get feedback. Great. And I thought that that would be a good opportunity for us to. See, know how to use it before they implement it.
Cause part of that includes an electronic time card function. That would be interesting to see how it integrates.
Actually works. Yeah, because I would think they have the same problems that Dewey has at the road department because people are out working.
Cause they talked about.
How about it is they can clock in and out wherever they are regardless of cell phone reception. And then it would just. Um, load into their time sheet or onto the iris website when they got back to the facility.
Whenever they got service.
Um, so even if they had to bring it here once a week.
We will find that there's a much easier system than the one that he's using.
I think so. And I would say as well that there is a, I think we need to give our road department guys a little bit more credit. Most of them, I suspect, are carrying a very powerful computer in their pocket at all times and, uh, probably can manage an app. Where they clock in and clock out. Just guessing, but I'm, I'm guessing.
Does, but he loses the.
I'm, I'm just saying, like, rather than assume because they're road guys that they can't do technology, let's give them a little bit of. Uh, credit that I think they'll be able to, to handle themselves.
Radcom is here today to fix the internet issue at the county shop. So there should no longer be an issue with the road. Internet. Um, they're installing the fire, the needed firewall and everything. So that should hopefully be wrapped up today for them to have their access back.
Um, as for me, um, so one question I have for you guys. I sat in on a conversation. I forget which senator was holding in. It's not ours. Um, it was a state senator, but who was interested in starting a, an effort. To try to reinstate an Amtrak line. Along eighty four. Yep. And so we were invited, um, as part of that discussion. I went and listened in to what they were planning. They are putting together a letter that I think is going to go to the congressional delegation. Saying, hey, we'd like you to look at this.
Seal Pioneer Line, I think is what they call it.
That's exactly right. And so I wanted to get some feedback. If we feel comfortable, all they needed was logos, um, from us. And I wanted before I sent ours to make sure that we were in general supportive of the idea of an Amtrak line.
Yeah.
That's going through us.
So it goes from Portland to Idaho?
So it's not clear down to Portland? Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure. But it was a line that was in place at one time. They wanted to get. Back up and going here.
And I think part of the thought process as well is that the state especially is moving toward, uh, carbon initiatives. Having trains is one of those ways that you can reduce the number of people who are riding on your freeways. So, um. That's one thing that they, and there are people who actually travel because they like riding on trains. Um, so there's that as well.
Well, what you're talking about. Legislation that's out there and I think it's bill twenty eleven. Uh, we want to keep an eye on it and, um, Dan Doran from Yountell County is going to give me on the coalition they got working on that, but it's about. Uh, some mandates to high energy users. To go green and real tight. Timelines to get them there. And it's a bad bill for bringing in possible new industry.
Okay.
And we want to keep a close eye on it and probably do what it takes to. Port the opposition line.
Twenty eight eleven.
I think it's twenty eight eleven, but if, if you see it.
It's a house bill.
It's a house bill. Um, I, I, um. Think it, it talks about high use energy industry or companies. So doesn't name what the target is, but. Industry.
Got it. Um, so the other thing I wanted to flag for you guys is that, um. I was able to connect with Arlington Childcare. I had an initial meeting after our last meeting with the new interim director. Or Director of Training. I don't know what title she's using, but Kelsey. Um, and two of the board members. And basically just previewed for them. The changes that we made to the operational support grant, the new requirements they're going to have to accept ERDC subsidies. And, um, they invited me to come talk to their full board. So I did that as well.
That was the other night.
That was the other night. Came down and had a good two, two and a half hour discussion with them. Um, hard conversation, but I thought it went okay. Um, and so one of the things that I told them, it sounds like the board is moving towards adopting. Um, some of the things that we know are going to reduce some of their administrative burden, which is for instance. Tracking kids by the hour and start looking at charging per slot, which is going to be helpful for them administratively. Cause Kelsey's got a lot on her plate, just running the, um, the center. Um, I showed them how to maximize the amount of ERDC dollars without pricing our private pairs out of. Care and gave them sort of a template that Condon has used successfully for them to. Uh. Modify to fit their own community's needs. So they have that and I think are moving towards that. They are also moving towards, um. Uh. Moving their financial systems to best practices. So actually using financial software. Rather than Excel to track with all of their expenditures. And so I think they're actually going to be purchasing ProCare, which is a, um. Software that is designed for childcare providers, um, which allows parents to clock in and clock out basically their child when they drop them off and that kinds of stuff. And I think we'll also in terms of the board getting, uh, their arms around, like where they actually are budgetarily. Will help them, um, kind of set a budget at the beginning of the year, be able to run budget to actuals. Right now I think their picture is somewhat limited by some of their internal policies and procedures for handling their finances. All of this to say that as part of their grant agreement, we require them to meet with. The court, but I kind of took that as me doing the conversation with them. Um, and we are holding up a portion of their last grant on the condition that they kind of move forward to this.
Twenty two, twenty three grand.
Correct. And I think, what is it?
Like six, fourteen to sixteen thousand dollars that we withheld from their grant request.
So.
Hold them accountable for policy updates and things like that.
So my recommendation, if there are no objections, would be to go ahead and release those funds. But require them to continue to meet with us on a regular basis so we can kind of monitor how they're doing and provide support as needed. Does that sound acceptable?
We can't because, I mean, we can't, we have to have daycare.
Correct. And they are running.
And they're having a conversation with the announced.
Correct. Yes. And it was, like I said, it was a hard conversation because change is hard. Um, and it's asking them to make some significant changes from how they have done business, which means they will get parents who are unhappy. With them. Um, but I'm hoping that in the long term. It will help them better plan and also. I mean, literally, I don't know how they're doing it, but they are tracking, you know, your parent drops off a kid, they're tracking the time that they came in manually. Transferring that, touching that potter who's actually doing the billing. Like it's just a very, it's a paper based.
Company.
System that when, is fine if you've got plenty of staff, but when you are. Don't have enough teachers or barely have enough teachers to be watching the kids. To be watching the kids, I don't know how you also do that administrative side well. Um and so this hopefully will help. Sort of streamline some of those processes, relieve some of the administrative burden on um Kelsey. So that she can focus on hiring teachers, making sure kids are well taken care of, all of the things that the center actually needs to be doing. To make sure the kids have a good uh place to go, so. Um if you guys, like I said, have no objection, we'll go ahead and run that through AP and release their check.
Any discussion around.
Do we just need a consensus?
No, because I think the way the grant agreement reads, like they're fit, they're fulfilling, like most of their their requirements for the grant agreement. That is just making sure we check in with you guys before we release.
That there's consensus. I don't think we need a motion as long as there's no objections. Yeah.
Yeah, we approved the amount, so.
What were you starting to ask?
So any discussions about along the lines of county way or any looks, I mean, the problem is.
So what I talked to them about um was, so just for folks edification who may not be aware of how. Child cares are licensed. The center in Arlington is considered a family-based center or home-based care. Which means this is why this is relevant is under state licensing requirements. They can never have more than sixteen kids ever. Doesn't matter how big the facility is, how many teachers they have, can never have more than sixteen. Condon operates under a center-based care, which means that. The amount of students they have in their building is based on the square footage and the number of teachers. Which means if they need to expand or add more kids, they need to have additional space and and additional teachers. But they can expand as needed down the road to meet this community's need. Arlington, under their current licensure, has no opportunity to do that. That's not the board's fault, anybody else's fault. It's just the way that they're licensed. In order to provide the flexibility, they need to move to a center-based model. But with that comes a whole bunch of new regulations, new requirements. Which is why the board has not moved in that direction previously, because of the whole thing. Their facility would likely be too small. They don't have enough teachers that are currently qualified. Under the higher standard of licensing that a center has to meet. And so getting them from one to the other is not as simple as saying, okay, we're gonna send her now. Like, there's a lot of things that go into it. So one of the things I did talk to them about is that their board, I think, needed to have some conversations about. Whether they wanted to be that center or whether they wanted to continue what they're doing and be sort of. A second auction for families. Exactly. So and I told them, you know, I think based on our discussions. The amount of demand that's currently in there and then the amount of demand that would likely be in there down the road. Particularly if there is any sort of significant investment at any point. A new company comes in. Even waste management is fully staffed. Um the the center model long-term is probably what that community is going to need. To long-term be able to meet those needs and that the court would like to see eventually there'd be a center there. And so what I made clear to them is like. Not that we're, I don't think our intention would be to take business from them, but just to make sure there's sufficient capacity. So if we needed to be actually coming in and figuring out how to make a center go. And Arlington decides, the childcare board decides, that's not us. We wanna stay little, we like what we're doing, that's fine. But that there may be a second center that eventually is developed that is able to expand and meet additional needs.
No different than getting more household.
Correct.
Businesses going.
And then under that model, if there are centers in both communities. It can either be two separate boards, two separate entities. Or I did mention to Condon. What would it look like to have a center in both areas? Understate a law, they both have to have a director that's on site, so there would be a Condon director and an Arlington director. And maybe having a an executive director that's overseeing both and sort of managing the direction of the overall entity. Having a board that oversees.
Can a director under whatever regulation or point is, can you, they also hold licenses to be a head count from the teacher and all that stuff.
Correct. They have to be, actually. Um and they, there has to, like, for instance, in Condon, if Janine's out of the building. The preschool teacher has qualifications to be a director. You can never, that center can never be open without.
So again, the executive director, they could flow multiple directions. They could cover your director absence.
And then you don't have to pull your teachers out of the classroom to go do director things, um if there's a problem.
Urges that we try to as much as possible, have an umbrella over the two communities as one. In every area that we can convince people, that's the most efficient way to run things.
And and realistically, I mean, Delaney and I have been looking at models all over the country to try to figure out, okay, who's doing this well? Doesn't matter what state. Who's doing this well? Like, what can we borrow? What can we steal to try to make this work here? What keeps popping up and what the state is starting to catch on to is this idea of a shared services model. Which is, you've got all of these little guys all over. They all need somebody who does their finances. They all need somebody who writes their grants. They all need somebody who oversees their overall strategic vision. They're all too small to pay for that by themselves. And so is there a way where you have these little centers where they could maybe pay in, say, a membership fee? And in exchange, they get access to a financial person, a grant writer, whatever, not necessarily dissimilar from what. The function that the ESD serves for the school districts where there's a consolidated group of professionals. Who know how to do this and school districts rather than to have have to have their own specialists sitting in their building. Can call Penny down here and say, hey, we need this service and we're gonna share costs with the other six school districts or whoever. Who also need, not necessarily a full-time position, but a part of a position kind of thing. So that is what we're finding is working in other states. And so I think there's possibly an opportunity, even if they remain distinct. To get them thinking about at least having some shared administrative staff. The same financial person, for instance, is an easier one, I think, to kind of grapple. So that they're not each individually paying full-time people and then trying to figure out how we're gonna keep costs supportable for families. Um so, yes, I'm in agreement. It can be under the same umbrella. That's financially better for them probably in the long run.
Well, it just makes sense in a lot of pro, in a lot of other entities too, just in shared resources and. Yeah.
Yeah, so um.
Singulmatic, let's not have two separate, completely separate structures.
So I'm gonna be continuing to spend a lot of my time, as much as I can free up, um to help each of them. In whatever ways that we can and then try to move folks toward a vision of more collaboration. As a worst-case scenario, but possibly a larger organization as sort of.
Arlington should be the Port of Gillon. It's a name change. You can't be that hard.
Not to put you on the spot, Jen. Um the other thing that I wanted to just raise related to childcare very briefly and then we can move on. Um. I have had, well, actually two things. Um I'm gonna be at AOC next month, the thirteenth. I'll be there for the ledge meeting. I'm gonna stay for the reception in the evening. I am planning to go and see some of our friends uh at the Capitol on Tuesday. Um after that, so fourteenth. There are two asks, one of which Pat's aware because we were both at the meeting, but I wanted to bring Leah up to speed, that there was a meeting in Condon. Last Friday about this idea of asking the legislature for some pilot money. To create a cultural creative district in Condon. Similar to like how Main Street districts or historic districts run.
Oh, yeah.
But the idea being that it's a a chance for community partners to kind of collaborate and envision. Like, how do we sort of reimagine Condon as sort of this destination for artists and makers? Doesn't have to just be artists, it can be chefs, photographers, whoever, um as well as like visitors who are traveling because they like art. Those kinds of things. And kind of put together like a community action plan, really. A vision and an action plan of like, what do we wanna see? What does Condon want to look like?
How do we fill empty store fronts up?
Exactly, like, um and so people had ideas about like public art. How do we, you know, maybe doing like pop-up galleries in some of our empty vacant, you know, our vacant spaces.
Should you apartment type situations where they do their work and stay for a while?
Yeah, we got artists coming in from Portland who need three months of quiet to finish their memoir, you know, those kinds of things. Like, how do we sort of make Condon that? And then the idea is that we would get some pilot money from. The state for the next biennium, next two years, kind of get a good model here. And then maybe look at doing what the chamber has done with their Main Street project, which is how do we branch into Arlington? Possibly how do we branch into the other two counties and make it so that there's kind of like a trail? Like, somebody comes in and says, oh, I'm gonna come for, I'm interested in the museum over in Sherman County, but oh, while I'm here, maybe I'll pop over Condon. And see their museum and then I'll do, you know, the painted hits or something. Um so how to get, once visitors are coming in, like staying and going through. All of these cultural things that we're developing. So the the community group that was there. Were basically in complete agreement that they wanted us to go ask for those funds, so I am gonna put in that ask on behalf of that group that met. Um which would basically be aligned in the Arts Commission budget, I think is where it needs to be. Um so I'm gonna go have those discussions.
So that's what's dragging and we we get Hansel on that too?
So what the, my understanding is that we would ask Greg, because he's sitting on the appropriations side. And so should be able to influence language in the bill. But Hansel actually sits on the Arts Commission's like.
Oh, wow.
Steering committee, I'm not sure. There's some kind of thing that he sits on, or he's directly related to what they're doing on their regular. And so I think the strategy would be to ask both, see if Greg can get it in the language and if Hansel can sort of help keep it in there. Um on the Senate's side and make sure that it comes to us and not whatever other community is trying to steal our good idea.
The labor committee.
So anyway, I'm planning on coming up with a one-pager and so maybe, Pat, if you're gonna be there, maybe we, maybe we both go.
Good.
And go talk to them about it. Um or I take one, you take the other, however we wanna do it.
Probably better if we both go, actually.
Yeah, so maybe I'll just have Delaney get us on their calendars.
I mean, numbers are always better, I think, and all that stuff down there.
Yeah, so um and since we've talked about it on here, folks are aware, Pat and I are. Moving forward on something we've discussed. It's already been decided. We're not collaborating on new stuff. Um and the other ask is I have been lobbying hard that I wanna see some childcare-related dollars coming out of the legislature. Um for some of the work that we're doing for Rocket and other things. And so I, last time I was down, did an initial ask for the early learning centers here, planned expansion. And um actually, while we were sitting in this meeting right before I walked in, uh Greg Smith's office called and asked. Is that your top priority if we get you a project in terms of like capital funding for childcare? Because it's the one that's spurred us along, my hunch is yes.
You don't have choice, I don't think.
Okay, so I will go back to them and say, yes, but we also could use some workforce development funding. We could use some other things. So I wanna like say, yes, and send us money for the actual building, but also we're gonna need teachers in that building. So if you could help us on some of the other pieces to actually get. Access expanded, that would be ideal.
And then we'll have to get houses for them to live in.
Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
You mentioned the cultural creative district.
Yes.
Would that be solely designated to Condon? Because we had that discussion because I wanted to include Arlington, because I I brought up, that was the day you showed me the pictures of them. And I tried to pull that into discussion and they kind of wanna get it started under Condon and then expand first to Arlington and see where that. It'd be a district that that we get up and get working and then expand it to obviously Arlington to be first. And then expand the district, like we've said, to other counties even, maybe eventually like frontier chamber.
Yes. Yeah, so I think the hope is that we convince the legislature to give us the pilot money this biennium. And then the ask in two years would be to go back and say, make this a permanent program. And then because we are ahead of all of the other entities, we wanna be first in line for funding to expand what we're doing. Which would allow in this next biennium to start tackling like Arlington and then hopefully go regionally.
And part of it's gonna have to be tracking how successful we are with Condon. To prove to Sam that this needs to be expanded statewide.
Yeah, and I think honestly, part of the reason that they were looking specifically in Condon. Is because the Arts Council has been up and running and is active. And so I think they were looking for, and the chamber has been. Very successful in its Main Street, so I think they were thinking there was good, gonna be good synergy between the two. And they're trying to, I think, we're trying to pick some communities that can't show good results.
They want to show results.
So.
So. All I'm saying is maybe you use the structure of a supported Arts Council and a. Blank palette. Sometimes it'll be located.
I think, yeah.
Name the county way in there.
Agreed.
I'm definitely advocating for that as much as possible, Jen.
Yes. In fact, I think that was the first thing out of Pat's mouth after the presentation was shared with us. So um those are all the updates that I have, right? Nothing else that I was asking? Okay. Um so with that, we are gonna go into an executive session. There's gonna be two things that that we're going under, so I will announce those. I just wanna um reiterate for folks who are listening in that we are not going to be making decisions coming out of here. So if you decide you wanna drop off, you're not gonna miss anything. We're just gonna come back in and adjourn and be done with our day. So um with that. The Gillen County Court will now meet an executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero two E. Which allows the court to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Following that discussion, the court will continue to meet an executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two six six zero two D. Which allows the court to meet an executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. Designated staff will be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to remain in the public virtual meeting room. While the court reconvenes in a private virtual meeting room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects. During the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to the audience in the public virtual meeting room. So we are back out of executive session. It is twelve fifty-eight and I will adjourn the meeting.